With.
Glad to have some, uh, some mostly full panel here tonight. Uh, we received an agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Um, yes, there will be a presentation under the city planners report from city attorney bear. Um, the topic will be an overview of Robert's rules of orders.
Okay. Thank you. With that change, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Swan. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Curtis. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, great. And we also received the minutes from our May 2nd regular planning commission meeting. Were there any questions, comments, concerns? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the May 2nd planning commission meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Swan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chambers. All in favor say aye.
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 Members in the. That opportunity will be later in the agenda, as well as for those watching online, you'll have the same opportunity uh, later on in the meeting on any non-agenda items. So with that, we will open the public hearing on the recommendation to the city commission for approval of subplan to the 2025 master plan for Imagine Westwood 2024 neighborhood plan.
Uh, Chair Milliken was, are you doing the public hearing first or you want the staff presentation?
Uh, well, I guess we will start with the presentation from staff. I may have preemptively opened the public hearing, uh, but.
And here I am using the wrong microphone. Um, there isn't a presentation, but there will be an overview from neighborhood activator Jay Slaby.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi everyone, so good to be back. I was here, uh, last June, uh, presenting on Stewart. So, uh, great to bring you, uh, the city's ninth and latest neighborhood plan. And Imagine Westwood gives us a unique opportunity to explore what, how a neighborhood functions and what its identity is when it crosses borders and encompasses both city and township. So, as you may be familiar with our public participation policy, it's updated in 2022. You know, our larger scale planning efforts. They have increasing connectivity all years, enhancing the public realm, championing community building, um, promoting a safe community and fostering a sustainable and resilient, uh, neighborhood. And what's interesting is if you, uh, remember from the Stewart plan, what I've been doing is, um, keeping, uh, standardizing these goals, right? And so in Stewart, we had, um, championing community building. We had enhancing public realm. We had increasing connectivity for all users. But you can also see the differences in what makes these neighborhoods unique. For Stewart, their other three goals included looking at historic preservation. Um, and, and compared to for Westwood, they want to prioritize safety. And what that looks like to improving their collaboration with our public safety officers. I also think that, uh, even when you have the same goal, so enhancing public realm across those two plans, you see the neighborhood's unique identity and needs reflected in the individual strategies of that goal. So for enhancing the public realm, Stewart really wanted to focus on improvements to the right of way, the curb lawn, when it comes to lighting. Okay, for Westwood, it looked totally different. Enhancing public realm meant to them improvements, uh, to amenities within their parks, because they have an amazing park system, and as well as in increasing the biodiversity, uh, within and throughout the neighborhood. For, uh, for Westwood, you can see throughout the neighborhood plan, starting with the cover page, that phrase park plays a, uh, really key focal point, uh, for them as, uh, as part of their identity for the neighborhood that bridges the township and the city together. This is where they hosted most of their engagement and, and their events throughout the year. National Night Out, they've had a resurgence of support and, um, volunteers through this effort. Every first Tuesday of August, several neighborhoods celebrate this national, um, initiative called National Night Out, uh, that brings community neighbors and city together. And Westwood is the second highest attended neighborhood for the last two years, boasting up to 500 people coming together that night to celebrate being neighbors and connecting with city and township and other resources. And they have just had a great time putting this together and being able to leverage that event to bring township and city residents together to make comments and provide feedback towards this plan. We had a majority of the residents that attended there were from the township. And so that was a great opportunity as a city staff person to be able to connect with them directly and understand what it looks like for them and how we can potentially help support what's going on in there, even though we may not have jurisdictional authority on many of their projects. Um, it was also important to, uh, work with their planner, um, Kyle Mucha. And we worked, we've been working together for over a year and a half on understanding joint efforts that we could participate, you know, and partner on together. So one of those projects you'll see under foster, uh, sustainable, uh, foster a sustainable and resilient neighborhood is exploring economic development tools, because sustainability resiliency is not just the environment, it's our economy. And we know that West, uh, West Main Street is one of our key commercial corridors that cross three jurisdictions, Ostromo, Kalamazoo Township and the city. And so we came together even in partnership with the previous planner at Ostromo to understand what combination of economic development tools can we implement over the next five to 10 years to really make that quarter thrive, not just for the businesses there, but also for the residents to make it walkable, make it a great, much more safer for any non-motorized usage, to be able to connect from the apartments where a lot of students live, all the way to the more resident, you know, single family neighborhood and back to the commercial area there along Drake and West Main. And so I'm really excited that we have these five goals that also show how phrase park plays a role in all of them and how we understand what safety looks like, what, uh, walkable communities look like, what championing neighbor, you know, positive neighbor relations look like. And I would love to take any comments after we have the neighborhood association present. And, um, I think that's all.
Great, thanks. At this moment, is there any immediate questions for staff? No? Okay, well then if a representative of the neighborhood association wants to speak, that'd be great.
And one last thing, so sorry. I do want to say this is a very dynamic tool that we will continue to use. It does not go on the shelf. We are ready to break ground at phrase park on many of these improvements as soon as this passes through you and the city commission. And so for us, this is also a great time for us to embark on what it looks like to build a stronger relationship with the township. This is not the end. So this is not to say we have a great working thriving relationship with any of the jurisdictions. This is us to say, hey, we want to make that happen. We want to start today in growing that. What does that look like? And so for us, just for you to understand that this is just the starting point. And we're hoping that these projects that we're proposing allows us to open up that conversation even more with everyone around us to partner on, on, on being able to accomplish these future goals. So this is Ron Hustler. He's a township resident, but he's also the president of the Westwood Neighborhood Association that represents both parts of the neighborhood. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. Uh, she said, I'm Ron Hustler, 1314 Coolidge Avenue in Kalamazoo. Um, I've been the president of the Neighborhood Association for seven or eight years now. Um, as you all, well, some of you are new members of the board panel, but, um, it, if you have an easy access and, uh, you put it out there in front of the people, if they have complaints, they send it right, right to you. And so for, that's one of the good things about Westwood is the people aren't afraid to send the information to me. It, I look at it as an opportunity. Uh, one of the opportunities that came up was, um, five years ago, uh, when I had a meeting, a couple of meetings in this room, uh, with the planning commission and the developer and the owner for, um, Chick-fil-A that went into West Main and Drake Road. The original plan would have probably caused a lot of traffic hassle with West Main. If you're, any of you are familiar with that area out there, there's a chicken place across the street. And every time they have a sale, we have to have police out there keeping the cars moving. We didn't want that to happen with Chick-fil-A, so, uh, we all got together with the planning commission and came up with an alternate plan, had to have a, a variance on the property, because we needed more parking space, more blacktop area. But we got all the cars off of West Main. And I'm not going to say it's been a hundred percent effective, but it has really been good. And that's what it's all about with everybody working together. Uh, the residents didn't want Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A wanted to be there and they're doing a great job. Uh, their sales have been great. Uh, you know, it's been a wonderful project. But just one little thing that we did as a group made the big difference. And that's kind of what this is about with this plan over these years and the, the, uh, two, uh, national night outs we've had and some other festivities and things we've had. And, and we've been present at, uh, a couple of the church organization outings, picnics and things. And we collected a lot of data and sometimes if you get people out of their realm and they're having fun, sometimes they'll tell you some things that they wouldn't have told you on a survey or didn't think of it, or they're just out there to relax and it's just, we're just humans. I mean, I'm not any better or any worse than anybody else. I'm just, I came out of rubber stamp and this is what I look like. They destroyed the stamp after that, but, um, it's, we have to, have to work together and try and give them things that, that they want. There's no sense in spending money if it's what I want. Well, I didn't need another Dairy Queen down in the middle of the, the park. I, I, you know, it's, it's what, that, that's not really a reality. But I mean, it's, it is, it's trying to give them things that make them happy and it makes us all look better. I mean, uh, no, no doubt about that. Uh, one of the things we did with, uh, Commissioner Hess is we had a problem with, uh, speeding traffic on Piccadilly. She took care of that real quick. Uh, there's speed bumps, speed humps on Piccadilly, but she had to go through the process, had to get the control mechanisms out there to monitor the traffic. But everybody's really happy with the traffic on Piccadilly now. It was pretty simple, but we lived with it for years. But now just getting everybody involved into a team that made it work. And that's what I feel this is all about. So I appreciate the time and thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, we'll come back if we do have any, but thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh, I will remind everyone that it's a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this matter, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Denise Hartsaw. I'll write it down for you. Um, I live at 2690 Timberleaf Lane around the corner from Ron in Kalamazoo Township. I'm here with an official, um, message from the Kalamazoo Township Planning Commission, which is also meeting right now. So I, after I talk, I will leave and go back to my meeting. So this is a statement that the planning commission in the township just, um, voted on, so I'm here to convey it to you. While the effort expended by the city of Kalamazoo on the Imagine Westwood Neighborhood Plan 2024 is appreciated, the planning commission of Kalamazoo Township reminds the authors and city of Kalamazoo Planning Commission that while there are ideas worth considering in their document, planning for that large majority of the Westwood neighborhood that is in the township is done by the township and is guided by the township's master plan. So, just wanted to convey that message to you all.
Hi there. Um, I'm Jean Hess, I'm city commissioner, uh, vice mayor and, uh, here as a Westwood resident who has worked with three different neighborhood activators to get this plan here now. Um, and I just want to say thank you to Jay Slaby in public for her, uh, passion, for her persistence, for continuing to work with our neighborhood and with the township, because this has not been done before. Uh, on a daily basis, I run into so many things in Kalamazoo that have never been done before. Uh, but the ability for the Kalamazoo Township to have this dialogue is important. Um, uh, we, I learned the history of Westwood through this. I, um, we have Julie Mack, who is a, uh, writer for, um, MLive, uh, live in our neighborhood, and she did an extensive, uh, history on the history of Westwood. Some of you probably look at a map of Kalamazoo and go, what the heck? Like, what's that little arm sticking out there? You know, and, and we learned why that is. So, uh, it was a whole educational process for me and for our neighborhood. And I think as we roll it out throughout the neighborhood, uh, if it's only the city, it's only the city. But if we roll it out through the neighborhood, it really does bring us all together over something really much greater. Um, and then, uh, one of the things, one of the reasons that we really do have to work with, uh, with the township is that both schools, both elementary schools and the high school are all in the township. Uh, and, and the kids that live in the city have to do that. And we really want to have, uh, uh, safe routes to school embraced and make sure that traffic is calmed and slowed in front of those schools, because one is on Grand Prairie and the other one's on Nichols. And we, I don't know if you all know, but it's, traffic there is horrendous. Um, and so, and, and then also working with the West Main corridor, like Jay mentioned, is really going to be important, especially the traffic around there, um, as we move forward with our, with our plan, with commerce. Um, but I look forward to working with the township if, if indeed this plan goes through. I support it a hundred percent. And I'm here also for Marty Nguyen. Marty was, uh, the heart and soul of making sure this plan got, uh, to this point here tonight. And she, uh, uh, she could not make it tonight, so I, I bring her, um, affirmation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, are there any online comments? No? Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing. Um, before we take a motion to open discussion, are there any clarifying comments or questions for staff? Yep? I, sorry.
The, the volume was off. Let me check again.
Okay. Cool.
But what we do look at is, um, prioritizing a project to do safe routes to school, which Vice Mayor has mentioned, two of them are in the township. And so understanding how could we model the Westwood Wiggle in other areas of that neighborhood to allow for students to be able to travel safely to school within the neighborhood? Uh, just like they done with the Westwood Wiggle to allow K College students to travel to the apartments and to the commercial plaza there. Um, I think, uh, what came out of that conversation was great. There was a resident there that brought up concerns about promoting no mow May without recognizing, um, the education that's needed for residents to understand what's invasive species or not. And so as a result of that, before this went to you, I adjusted it. And we actually took out this idea of promoting no May, because when, no mow May, because when you think about it, you build up a pollen, wonderful pollinator habitat for a whole month just to mow it down after that, right? And so instead, I talked with different partners locally, the Zer, uh, chapter of the Xerces Society, Wild Ones, Kalamazoo Nature Center, to understand their capacity to be able to host workshops with the neighborhood, which they agreed to in the future, uh, to provide education on native plantings, pollinator habitats and invasive species. So instead of promoting a one-time initiative that may not be effective, we made it even better from that comment, from that resident, from the township planning commission meeting, and turned that into, I think, an even better project, which is to educate people on all these different topics through ongoing workshops with some really cool partners. And so again, I mean, for us in terms of enforcement, we can only enforce what we can within our city limits. This is to encourage for continued partnerships with the road county of, uh, road commission of Kalamazoo County. You know, I've sat down with the county planner, Rachel Grover, about this. I sat down with Metro, which is a countywide transit authority. And they loved all of the things that they were, you know, designated to help lead. Um, we worked with, I sat down with MDOT. By 2025, we'll see some pedestrian refuge islands along West Main, which is pretty cool. Um, and so just continued partnership is what's going to get us to help achieve some of these projects that may be outside of our city limits. But no, we cannot dictate, you know, the township to do this or the county commi, um, the county road commission to do that. But I think that's not what we want to do anyways, right? Even within the city, I'm not dictating public services department to put in that sidewalk tomorrow. I'm working hand in hand with them to understand what funding we need, um, and, and, and facilitating the other logistics around that. So it's all about relationship building. That's the core tenet of neighborhood planning. And that's what's represented in the implementation phase of this work. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Well, and, and I was going to say this later, but since we're talking about it now, if, if I can just position it a little bit differently or how I'm viewing it, this is a neighborhood plan. And one of my biggest questions was what's the geography of this neighborhood? And, I mean, the chair of the neighborhood is a township resident. And, and so my guess is this, and probably the majority of the feedback was coming from township people that went into building this. So we've got, we've got an association and a neighborhood plan that is representative of the multi-jurisdictional geography that it's representing. And so that, that plan is wonderful. And, and we're, we're adopting that plan as part of our plan. And I would hope that the township views it in that same way. I'm a little disappointed by the, the comment that was made this evening, frankly. And, um, I can, having worked in the township for many, many years, And I can, having worked in the township for many, many years, I see their perspective is, okay, Big Brother's coming in, telling us what to do, et cetera. But I hope they view it in the other sense of, here's the neighborhood telling us, this is what we want to do. And it's a neighborhood plan that you've put a lot of work in. And I really appreciate all the work that you've put into it and these others on behalf of 75% of that neighborhood being not in the city.
And I did work closely, like I mentioned earlier, with Kyle Mucha, who's their planner. And he shared, they did a survey for their master plan as they were developing that. And actually, the majority of those responses were from Westwood residents. So he shared the results with me. So I also cross-referenced that to understand, oh, wow, they're, they are prioritizing sidewalk investment. And so, that matches what we're hearing directly from township residents and city residents. And I love that Ron is a township, you know, resident, president of the association. Marty, who couldn't be here and is very sad not to be here. He's, she's been putting this on her calendar for over a year. She is a city resident, lives on Croydon, and she chaired the steering committee for this. So it really was even within the neighborhood association, across jurisdictional collaboration to lead this effort.
Yeah. Well, that's great. Good. Any other? Okay. Well, with that, we'll take a motion to recommend approval to the City Commission of the sub-plan to the 2025 Master Plan for Imagine Westwood 2024 in order to open up discussion.
I would move to recommend approval of the Westwood Neighborhood Plan.
All right. We got a motion by D'Scenzo. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chambers. All right. With that, do we have any discussion?
I would just like to say that, looking through this plan, reading it, they do a good job of clarifying how well it aligns with the master plan for the city and a good enough job, too, of how it aligns with the township's master plan. And with that information, it seemed like a clear, supported by the neighborhood. And I feel like that means I support it as well. Thanks.
Great. Other discussion?
Oh, yeah. I think it was a very thorough report. And definitely good to see support on both sides of the jurisdictions where, yeah, certainly, we don't want this to seem like an overstep of our jurisdiction. But I think it's mostly just about including all voices. Where if we were to be looking at plans that only addressed city residents in the Westwood neighborhood and looking at improvements or policies that would only occur within the city limits, but would affect everyone within the neighborhood, that would be, I would argue, more patently unfair to the township residents. So that's why I feel very comfortable with this plan as put forward.
Great. Very well said. Anything else? Well, it is like, was stated, it's consistent with the master plan and very well put together. And like you said, there's a consistency building in these formats. This makes implementation by all the various different groups that have to implement a lot easier because they get used to seeing certain things. So, so well done on that front. Seeing nothing else, can we get a roll call vote?
Curtis?
Yes.
D'Scenzo?
Yes.
Milliken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Tolber?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks again for all the hard work on that. All right. Now, the vote on commission officers.
Yep. So a little bit of background. Every annually, once a year, the Planning Commission elects three officers, a chairperson, a vice chairperson, and a secretary. In a broad sense, the responsibility of the chair is to preside over the meeting, sign any official documents, and, you know, lead the meeting. The responsibility of the vice chair is to fulfill the duties of the chair if they're not present. And the secretary signs minutes, can prepare minutes, but we're fortunate enough to have staff help with that. And in the event the other two are not available, serves as chair. The current, the Chair Milliken is the chair. And Patelco is the secretary. And the, the vice chair is no longer on the commission. I, I get, previous years, it looks like, you know, done notes in a hat or someone makes a motion of a recommendation. And if that person accepts, then you guys have done a voice vote.
Okay.
So with that, I, I will, I guess, turn it over to, to the commission to, if someone wants to either voice or, or for discussion. And I do have the bylaws here if there's any more specific questions about duties or responsibilities.
All right. So does anyone have a recommendation for chair? Anybody?
I'd recommend you.
Anyone else?
I, I second that.
Uh, seeing how we don't have a vice, we'll take these one at a time since we don't presently have a vice chair. I think last year, we just did a whole slate. So, uh, now, this is my last year. So I have a lot of PTO built up. I'll be taking that. Just kidding. Uh, okay. Any others? I don't want to exclude anyone. No, no one? All right. In favor of myself as chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone? No? Okay. Thank you all. I appreciate the confidence you blindly continue to show. Vice chair?
I have a question. If anyone's had any conversations with Brian Patelco, the current secretary, about stepping up into the next kind of role, becoming vice chair? I haven't. But I would nominate him if that's allowed.
Sure thing. He's not here. Any other nominations or recommendations? You were going to second Brian, okay? You're going to second for Brian? Others? Going once, going twice? All right. All in favor of Brian as vice chair? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then secretary? So we'll need a secretary. Anyone?
I'll volunteer for secretary.
Okay. Any other?
I'll second.
All good? Okay. All in favor? Commissioner Swan as secretary?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much. We have our slate of officers. All good?
Thank you. And congratulations to all the appointed officers.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. It's a good thing we moved to the next meeting. Well, yeah. We got to make sure we covered July meeting day. All right. City Planner Report?
Um, there is, the item for the City Planner Report today will be a presentation on a Roberts Rule of Orders by Attorney Bear from the City Attorney's Office. So he has a presentation prepared and we'll be able to provide a lot more information on that. Beth, did you have it on your computer? I just didn't know what screen was up.
Good evening, commissioners. We have some new faces tonight, some new commissioners. And I believe this is going to be recorded to present to other boards and commissions as well. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Charlie Bear. I'm Assistant City Attorney with the Kamazoo City Attorney's Office. The city has adopted Roberts Rules of Order as the rules of procedure for all boards and commissions of the city. Now periodically, the City Attorney's Office is giving a presentation on Roberts Rules. Staff and I came to realize recently that it'd been something like 13 years since this had been done. So we decided maybe it was time to present this again as a refresher for those of you who may be familiar with Roberts Rules and an introduction for those who may not be as familiar. We go next slide. I know when I started dealing with Roberts Rules, I wondered, who is Robert and why do we have Roberts Rules? Henry Martin Robert was a career Army engineer, served in the Civil War, was the first chief of the Army Corps of Engineers. He was active in local affairs and participated in many local meetings. Very chaotic meetings, if you check the, the history of where he was stationed. Decided there had to be a better way to conduct a meeting, and he really didn't know much about it. So he checked the resources, didn't find them adequate, and put together his own rules. Published the first Roberts Rules of Order in 1876. So we'll proceed. Next slide. So why do we have parliamentary procedure? Well, I suppose we could say the bylaws say we have to, because they do. That's not a particularly good reason. More importantly, they provide the organization to a meeting of a deliberative body, a body such as we have, that receive information and make a decision based on that information. It permits an orderly focused debate and discussion resulting in a voter decision. There are provisions to hear all sides of a question and arrive at a decision of the majority. And in the case of municipal boards and commissions, which are quite often functioning as quasi-judicial bodies, which we'll talk about a little more as this presentation goes on, it enables us to establish a good record for precedent or in the event a decision is appealed. We are going to talk about the basics. We can proceed to the next slide. And discuss motions, deliberation and discussion on motions, making changes to motions, voting or not, postponing an action, reconsidering an action, and recess and adjournment. Motions on the next slide are essentially how business gets done. A motion is nothing more than a proposal to take certain actions. Under Roberts Rules, there are two general classifications of motions. First is the main motion. This is how business is introduced. And with most of our boards and commissions, those are going to be items on the agenda. Then there are secondary motions. These introduce matters to be addressed before a vote on the main motion. They introduce matters to be, uh, they direct procedural steps, revise the motion, and address other matters. Now, there are three classifications of secondary motions under Roberts Rules. And I do have in subsequent slides and in the materials, a discussion of those classifications and the various motions that fall under them. I'm not going to go through all of those. We're going to, in a moment here, proceed to slide 14. And we're going to go through a discussion of presenting a motion and more common motion, secondary motions. The reason I'm not getting into all of the motions. Our boards and commissions is defined by Roberts are small boards and commissions. And Roberts estimates that 80% of the time, a small board uses 20% of the motions. Most of those motions you're never going to see or have a need for, most likely. In my 20-plus years advising municipal boards and commissions, frankly, I would, the percentage of motions used, I would make that a smaller number. And the amount of time that smaller number is used, I would increase that. So proceeding on, we are going to now talk about introducing a main motion. And that is slide 14. To introduce a motion or make a motion, a member has to be recognized by the chair. So essentially, that would be chair, chairperson, and then the chair recognizes you, Mr. Bear. And once recognized, then you would state the motion. So for example, I move that a special use permit as requested by the Smith brothers to operate a kennel for ferrets at 829 West Cedar be approved. Another member then, without needing to be recognized with the chair, should say second. Now, it's important to note that in making a motion and seconding the motion, you are simply bringing a matter before the board for discussion. This doesn't mean you're in favor of the motion necessarily by either moving for it or seconding it. You're just bringing it before the board for discussion. If there is no second, the motion dies. So it's like there isn't, there was no motion at all. You don't say support. Because support indicates that you're supporting or in favor of the motion. We're keeping neutral at this point. Simply bringing the matter for discussion. Note that the chair doesn't make motions. But the chair can request or suggest a motion. For example, the chair will entertain a motion to whatever the motion may be. And we want motions to be stated in the affirmative so that a yes vote accomplishes or authorizes something. Now, in the example, let's say that motion was to deny a special use permit. And there was a vote on that motion, and that motion was not approved. Well, we know that the motion's not going to be denied, but it hasn't been approved either. Nothing has happened. No action's been taken. On the converse, if it's to be approved, if it's voted for, it's approved. If it's voted against, it's denied. So action gets taken. Once you have a motion and a second, then the chair restates the motion. And if it's a complicated motion, the chair can have a secretary or staff state the motion. So they don't necessarily have to remember that. But we want the motion, Roberts Rules wants the motion be restated so that it's clear what is being discussed and so that we have a good record of what's being discussed. The maker of the motion has the first opportunity to speak on the motion, but they need not do so. do so. If it's something you're not going to vote for, you've made the motion, but you're not going to vote for it, then you would decline to speak, because you can't speak against your own motion. Because deliberative bodies need a record to support any decision, members making their remarks should reference the facts that were presented either in favor or in opposition to the motion. We want to stick to the facts. We don't want to bring in collateral or unrelated material. Discussion should be pertinent to the motion, points not directly dealing with the motion shouldn't be brought up. If the debate is getting overly long, it can be eliminated by a motion to end debate or to call the question. Both of those bring the matter to a vote. They do require a two-thirds vote, and if it's approved, then there is a vote immediately. Continuing on with this, you should remember that in most cases, you are acting as a quasi-judicial body with quasi-judicial authority, and that is the authority to hear evidence, make decisions, and issue rulings that resemble judicial functions. That also means that you have to provide due process. Due process basically is a constitutionally guaranteed fair procedure. It requires considering only evidence and testimony received at the public hearing on the matter. In most instances, there are going to be standards for making your decision. So with the zoning board of appeals, if it's a dimensional variance, there are standards to determine if that should be granted, the same with a use variance, the same with a If we are dealing with a natural features protection ordinance and seeking a variance for that, there are standards for that. So in discussing the matter and making your decision, you should consider and discuss how the facts, the evidence and testimony received, apply to those standards. You want your discussion and your decision to be objective, that is based on facts versus subjective, which is based on feelings and emotions. By doing that, you are demonstrating impartiality. And impartiality is required by due process. You are functioning as an impartial tribunal. So we're going to proceed now to making changes to motions. That does occur from time to time, something needs to be changed. In certain instances, changes can be made before the chair states the motion. More commonly, changes are made after. Before the chair states the motion, the maker of the motion can either withdraw the motion or withdraw the motion and restate it. If the motion is withdrawn, then there's no motion. If the motion is restated, then the original second of that motion must accept the restatement or withdraw their second, and then you need a new second. If the motion is restated, then the chair states the motion as restated, that becomes the motion. In some instances, other members can suggest one or more changes to the motion, or the motion is restated by the maker. Now, this really should be limited to minor changes for, which is unlikely that there will be any difference of opinion. So let's say that the maker of the motion restates the, misstates rather, the address. Instead of 829, they say it's 819. Well, then you can move to make that change. If you do, then the maker has to accept the change, as does the second. If the second does not, then you need a new second. If those changes are accepted, then that becomes the motion. That procedure can be used after the chair states the motion, if it is, again, something minor for which it's unlikely to be contested or a difference of opinion. Otherwise, after the chair states the motion, then we need an amendment. To amend a motion, a member once recognized by the chair should state the proposed amendment, as in, I move to add the words "and" mink after the words ferret. If the amendment receives a second, that becomes the motion, or the motion under discussion. Chair should restate the amendment, and the maker of the amendment has the first opportunity to address the proposed amendment. It is possible to amend an amendment. So another member may move to amend the proposed amendment, as in, I move that the word mink be replaced by the phrase "other members of the weasel family." So if seconded, this becomes the matter under discussion. Now, if you review my listing of motions earlier, you'll find that certain motions, there are priorities, and a motion to amend an amendment has priority over the motion to amend. Makes sense that you would do that, so that's going to be discussed first. Once it appears there's no further discussion, or there's a motion to end debate that's been approved, the chair calls for the vote on the motion. The chair should state the motion being voted on, as in, all in favor replacing the word mink with the phrase "other members of the weasel family," say yes. All opposed, say no. Now, you may note, I'm not saying say aye, or say nay, or any other antiquated term. Yes and no work fine, and we're more familiar with those anyway. So once there's a vote, the chair announces the results, as in, the motion is defeated. The question before the board is an amendment to insert the word mink after the word ferret to permit the kenneling of both types of animals at 829 West Cedar. Is there any further discussion? You see in that example, the amendment to the amendment is defeated, chair proceeds right to the amendment. And if there isn't any further discussion, then the chair calls for the vote. All in favor of inserting the word mink after the word ferrets to permit the kenneling of both types of animals, say yes. Opposed, say no. Then the chair announces the results. The motion is approved. The question before the board is whether a special use permit is requested by the Smith brothers to operate a kennel for ferrets and mink at 829 West Cedar be approved. In voting, remember that as members of a public body, you have a duty to vote on all matters before the body unless you have a conflict due to a personal, financial, or fiduciary interest. You should not abstain from voting on matters unless you're conflicted, and the conflict needs to be clearly stated and reflected in the minutes of the meeting. So, for instance, in the example used in this presentation, if a member has a familial or financial interest in the Smith brothers' kennel, or lived within 300 feet of the notice area, the member's conflicted and should not participate in the discussion or voting on the matter. So what happens then? Some attorneys request that the conflicted member either step down from the dais and have a seat, or leave the room. That's not legally required, you can remain on the dais. The reason some attorneys have the conflicted member step down is they want to avoid any appearance of influence to the other members. So it could be that maybe that spicy taco you had for dinner before you came into the meeting is causing you a little gastrointestinal distress, and you're frowning, or scowling, or something. That really could be interpreted as trying to influence the other board members at certain times. So if you do remain on the dais, best to keep a poker face, because we do not, we want to avoid the appearance of impropriety. There are some times when it's not clear if it's a conflict. If you think it might be asked, now you can contact staff, you can contact my office ahead of time, and we can discuss that. If it's a really close, close question in Robert's Rules, it is possible to put it up to the board for a decision, is there a conflict or not. I have seen that done on occasion, but in, in most cases, we like to avoid the appearance of impropriety, so it may be best to declare a conflict. There are times when there's a desire to put off a decision to obtain more information. Boards can always do that, or because of the uncertainty of impact that the decision may have on the neighbor, neighborhood, or community. The proper motion in that case is a motion to postpone. It's not a motion to table. I consider the motion to table the most misunderstood and misused motion under Robert's Rules. The motion to table is used to put a motion in any subsidiary motion, any secondary motions that are pending off to a later time in the same meeting. It should not be used to postpone something to a later time. That's a motion to postpone. In a motion to postpone, you're either taking something up at the next regularly scheduled meeting, or after a certain described event. It does require a second, it is debatable. There's also a motion to postpone indefinitely that we aren't going to use. That effectively kills the motion, it's not appropriate for deliberative public bodies because there's a duty to act on matters before the board or commission. Sometimes you might be confused or desire to change your vote. That can be done under a motion to reconsider. The motion reconsider should be made as soon as possible while there are no other matters pending before the body. Only a member who voted with the majority or prevailing side may make the motion to It should be made on the same day as the vote to be reconsidered was taken, because it can't be applied where the provisions of an affirmative vote have been carried out or something has been done that can't be undone. And in many cases, where the next meeting is a month away, that's going to be the case. The motion reconsider must be approved before the body takes up the original matter again. We also have motions to recess and adjourn. These are the highest ranking privileged motions, they suspend or terminate the meeting. In most cases, the need to recess or adjourn can be apparent. Long meeting, you may want a recess. The chair, unless a member calls a point of order, may use its prerogative to call for a recess or adjournment. For example, unless there is an objection due to the length of the meeting, we will take a 15-minute recess and reconvene at 9:50 PM to recess, or there being no further business before the board, the meeting is adjourned. What would be the purpose of a point of order there? A point of order is to essentially point out or that the procedures of Robert's Rules are not being followed. So in that particular instance, someone might make a point of order saying, hey, I want to vote on this. And you can. Or board can, as a matter of policy, simply require a motion and vote on it. So that's my presentation. Does anyone have any questions at this point? It's time to quiz the attorney.
Got it all down?
I have one question about one of the examples you gave. For the conflicts of interest section, you mentioned, it was given as the example, they were either financially involved or lived within 300 feet of the affected area. Is that 300 feet a, like, hard and fast, or is that just an example, a gut check of, like, oh, hey, I'm probably too close to be affected, or is there actual policies in place for that?
There are actual policies in place, and typically statutory requirement. That's the notice area for many actions, for variances, for rezonings, and so forth. So that, yeah, that is an actual requirement.
Okay. So that's something to keep in mind as we look to large rezonings of many properties. We make sure we don't want to take anything in front of the board that would require a recusal of too many members of the board if we're voting on properties that are close to where all of us live.
Yeah. And it's, I mean, the presumption has essentially been made within that area, that people are going to be interested, or may be interested in that particular action.
Well, but chances are very good, like, when we rezone the residential properties, like, 70% of the city will be involved in that.
That's exactly what I brought up.
And many of our parcels will be involved in that. And so I think that's
Yeah.
...a situation where even though, and you can, maybe you can speak to this better than I can, but that's a situation where I would say, because it's such a broad brush, I mean, the commercial zoning was such a broad brush, it's almost like it's our obligation perform our duty in that case. It's not like we're pinpoint this parcel, this parcel, this parcel. We're dealing with the zoning ordinance for the entire city, I would say. Would you agree?
I think that's a fair statement. I agree with that. Yes, you have some interest in some portion of that broad rezoning, but as I mentioned, you know, you have a duty to, to vote on matters, too.
And that's why there's nine of us.
And if it's broad enough, it really removes any conflict, because there are a lot of areas there that you really aren't conflicted with.
Yeah. And like you said, like, there's nine of us, I didn't know if there would ever be a situation in which we would break a motion up into one or two sections to get to, if we felt that too many members would have to recuse, if they were personally affected by this, we could section off and have them vote on one portion, the other members of the board vote on another portion, just to make sure, but if it sounds safe to the city attorney that it's a more broad, low stakes on an individual basis, that also makes sense.
That triggered a question for me. Do recusals affect quorum?
No, I don't believe.
Okay.
If you have a quorum present, no.
I have a question, because I did learn something new tonight. When you said the proper motion to actually postpone something in a meeting is not the motion to table, when would it be appropriate to use the motion to table? Or is it ever really appropriate?
Frankly, I don't think that comes up very often, at least not in my, my experience. It's conceivable there could, something could come up that needs to be addressed immediately. Some emergency, or something that really wasn't, that came up in the course of the meeting that you had to address. I don't think that comes up very often. Occasionally, I have seen a need for a motion to suspend the rules. Motion to suspend the rules Motion to suspend the rules basically enables you to take things out of order. And I recall one situation that we had, a previous community I worked for, a nearby city who, in this community, remains nameless, that we had a couple who were there seeking a variance, I don't remember what now, maybe to build a garage or something, a dimensional variance, and their babysitter had some conflict, they had to get home. We accommodated them by moving them from the end of the agenda to the front of the agenda. So, you know, there could be circumstances, there could be other circumstances where maybe you want to change the order.
Gotcha. That makes sense. Now that I've heard this, I've been into quite a few meetings where that motion to table has definitely been used incorrectly.
It's quite common.
Yes. Thank you for teaching us about that.
Any other questions?
Anything else? My last slide is basically just was resources. We have pictured there the official Robert's Rules of Order, the 12th edition, all 633 pages of it, plus tables. That's more information than you're probably ever going to need. The Robert's Rules of Order in brief may give you more information than you normally need, but is probably more useful. There is a Robert's Rules website where there's question and answer information, and questions can be posed, and at some time or another, a parliamentarian may get on and answer. We've given you some cheat sheets, which probably most instances will be helpful. There are other publications of Robert's Rules. I mean, there have been since 1876, 12 editions. The copyright on some of the earlier editions has expired, so they're just out there, public information. So some of the earlier editions then have been republished. I don't find them as easy to read or understand as I do the official publications. The language can be kind of antiquated, and they aren't always as complete. Anything else?
All right. Thank you very much for the lessons. That's great. Probably anything on a site plan list? Or any other city planner report item?
There are no other items in the city planner report, and the current site plan list updated as of Friday is on there, so.
Okay.
No real significant projects. I mean, there's some significant projects, but no arena yet, at least.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll open it up for public comments. These are public comments on non-agend items. If there's anyone in the audience that'd like to come forward, you'll have three minutes to speak. And if you're watching online, that phone number again is 888-382-9556. And we will hear what you have to say.
Ron Huster, 1314 Coolidge Avenue. I'd like to thank you for approving our plan. What happens in Westwood City obviously affects the residents of Westwood Township and vice versa. We don't have a sign up at Shide Family Park that we had redone the tennis courts and added pickleball courts. We didn't, that you had to be a resident of the township to use it. At Fraise Park, when we redid the tennis courts and added the pickleball courts and all this, we didn't say you have to be a city resident in order to use it. We're trying, it's a neighborhood, and the neighborhood decided that we all are Westwood. It doesn't matter whether you live in the city or the township. We all had similar interests. It's been Westwood for years and years and years. Part of it got split. I don't care. None of us had anything to do with that. We have to live with this or change the name, and nobody wants to change the name, so we have to live with it. Unfortunately, some, this young lady was thrown in as an olive branch into the township with their planning commission, and it's a start. I try to attend some of their meetings. I live in the township, try and work things together. It's difficult, because I, never mind. It's different dealing with the city than it is with township. But I really thank you. I think it's a great step forward for the neighborhood, and I think everybody, even in Oshmo Township, is going to benefit from the things that come out of the city. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Is anyone calling online?
Nope, no comments.
No comments.
And volume is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Wanted to make sure to officially welcome on behalf of the city commission, new Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Tolber. Welcome to the group. It feels like a full deck now. It was feeling a little bit empty up there for a while, but seems like we have a really impressive group. And I was just recently mentioning to somebody, it is, really, this group is a perfect example of just how astonishing, I guess we shouldn't be astonished, but how impressive it is that we, as a community, have people who are readily available with the expertise and passion to serve in a group like this. So thank you for stepping forward and for your service to the community. I also want to take a moment to congratulate and thank Westwood residents, including our very own Vice Mayor Hess, who have been part of the neighborhood planning process, which will hopefully be the ninth planning, neighborhood plan, and also thank Jay and the rest of the city staff team for their work. I know that's, requires quite a bit of diligence to make all that happen. I wanted to make sure to let the public know, if you didn't get a chance, there was a really great committee of the whole meeting this last Monday on, I'm sorry, on June 3rd, our 5 o'clock meeting. The committee of the whole meeting focused on our Foundation for Excellence and really gave a great update about how much of an impact the Foundation for Excellence has had on our community. Everything from property tax reductions we see, general fund stabilization and aspirational projects that we see. Something I learned that I didn't realize, the average household from pre-FFE days till today is saving on average about $700 a year because of, at FFE. So it's pretty impressive, right? The other thing as well, for those of you who are new to the planning commission, one of the goals that I have, and I've shared this repeatedly with the former commissioners, is that my goal is to make sure that I'm the feedback loop. So you make an action, like tonight, you recommend that the neighborhood plan moves to the city commission. So my goal would be at the next meeting, once we have voted at the city commission, to report back and share the outcome of that vote. And so at our last meeting, the city manager actually had a chance to present the 2023 annual report on planning activities, and it was chock full of all the great work that you all do, and it was really impressive to see all that condensed about, for the planning commission. And then lastly, one of the things I get asked quite frequently, I'm sure Vice Mayor Hess hears this a lot as well, is there's all these projects going on around the community, right? We have a record number of infrastructure projects going on, and it's hard to keep track of what's happening, why it's happening, and what to anticipate. So there's actually a section on our website at calamazoocity.org/community罡ex. I really recommend you bookmarking that page, because it's a really great source, so if you have a question on a road project or something going on in the city, to see the timeline, why it's happening, and what you can anticipate. So with that, I wish you all a great night, and we'll see you later this summer.
Great. Thank you very much. Planning commissioner comments? Any planning commissioners have comments?
First, I just wanted to thank the city staff for doing what you did. We really appreciate it, especially getting this neighborhood plan in action and trying to bring both city and township together, because that is one hard job to do with two different governments and having two different ideas at hand. And as you'll go through the rest of the city, you're going to see that there's a lot of places where the city connects with other cities and multiple jurisdictions where we have to do that. And I'm happy with the, I'm assuming, because we need, we need our neighborhoods to be strengthened, and we need that support to help make sure that everybody knows that they matter. And I also wanted to welcome our two new members. I appreciate you guys for joining us, and it will be fun the rest of the summer.
Can we confirm our meeting date for everybody?
Ah, yes, I'm glad I checked. It is Monday, July 8th, 7 p.m. here at C Hall.
Monday, July 8th, to get around the 4th of July holiday. I will second the welcome to our new commissioners. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us. We have one other new member, right? There's, yeah, one other one that couldn't be here tonight, but we'll have a full deck at some point in the future, and we've got flexibility for when there's nights like tonight when people can't make it. Bubbling up and feeding our master plan, and that's how I envision this. This is feeding our master plan, just like it'll feed the township master plan, and so really, really good stuff there. And just a reminder, Kick Pool opened yesterday, so check it out. It's my plug for Kick Pool. So with that, enjoy the summer, everybody. Having exhausted our agenda, we're adjourned.